I'm Tom Stiles, I'm Service Development Manager at Nottinghamshire County Council. It's an IT job and I support colleagues in our web team and our call centre with the technology that they need to do their jobs. So we're going to be talking a little bit about Umbraco in local government and how we might want to do more as a community to support local government. So just so I can get an idea of who I'm talking to, who works for an agency? Okay. Who works primarily as a techie? Techies? Business development or project management? Okay. Who's currently working with some sort of local government or education authority? Okay. Who would like to do more with that market? Okay. Right. So I thought I'd buzzfeed my presentation a bit, just because it's post lunch, everyone's a bit sleepy. And if you want to tweet or tweet about my talk, if you include that, then my management know that I'm doing something interesting because it might get them to pay attention a bit. So tell you a little bit about what we're going to cover. A little bit about Nottinghamshire, yes, the one like Robin Hood, our digital first project, which was the big project that kicked off our involvement with Umbraco in the first place. How public sector procurement works, because if you're not familiar with how public sector procurement works, you might not understand quite what the barriers are to Umbraco getting involved in the public sector. How we chose Umbraco, what we did with it, pain points, and then what the Umbraco community can do to help overcome some of those pain points and hopefully broaden the usage of open source content management systems, particularly Umbraco, in the public sector. We're really passionate about Umbraco and really feel welcome in this community and we'd like to see more of our government colleagues, both local and national, to be part of that as well. So a little bit about our home county. We're a doughnut-shaped top-tier authority in the East Midlands, so we have the city in the middle. They're a unitary authority, so they provide all local government services. We're a top-tier authority, so we don't do your bins, we don't collect your council tax, but we do do things like social care, education, libraries, stuff like that. Got a big budget, 1.5 billion, but it's been cut every year and will be cut every year for the foreseeable future. We've got 750,000 people live there and they're split into seven districts. The districts all have their own local councils as well, whereas we have a fairly sizable web and IT support team. The local councils usually have one web guy, so they're looking on a very different budget and gradually we're starting to work closer together with our district colleagues. We used to use EasySite. EasySite's an ironic name. So this is a proprietary piece of software that was delivered by a company called EIBS and they're based in Wilford, which is about a mile from County Hall where we work. So we thought, this is going to be great, they're going to be over and helping us, supporting us and we have a really good relationship with this supplier. Didn't really work like that. In fact, they were pretty poor in terms of their customer support and the software turned out not to be that good. We launched our new Umbraco website in September 2015. And the last thing you need to know about Nottinghamshire is Robin Hood may or may not have existed. It's kind of, the only people that really care are the tourist board because loads of people come to find out about Robin Hood. So this is our three pillars of how we deliver services and ultimately what we're doing in our IT department and with our partners in the call centre and on the website is trying to deliver public services to our citizens as cost effectively as we can and effectively for the citizens. So historically, we've kind of sat in separate piles and not really interacted very much and we're starting to realise that, look at me with my PowerPoint skills, we're starting to realise that actually if we're going to deliver services, we need to collaborate a lot more and we're starting to come together. So the call centre uses all the content on our website to power their interactions with customers when they're on the phone, so increasingly looking to move towards an assisted digital model. So they care about the quality of the content and the information on the website and we're trying to move people off the phones and into a self-service delivery model. And the big driver for that project was digital first and the strapline, which I'm sure is something that anyone familiar with, the GDS is familiar with, digital service is so good that people prefer to use them. Little bit of data that was collected at the start of the project, looking at the different costs of transacting with the council. Ultimately, what the council, what we're trying to do is serve people and if that's face-to-face, we don't do very much face-to-face now, but if it was face-to-face, it's about nine quid, 10 quid per interaction, over the telephone, just short of a fiver and for the web, very, very cheap. Now that just is for the actual interaction. What happens after that interaction is the full cost of the service and that data doesn't really reflect that, so I think it's probably sensible to caveat that data with, that's just for the interaction part of the service, what happens afterwards might be different. So the objectives of Digital First Project was to maximise the digital take-up via self-service and automation, to reduce our transaction costs, increase customer satisfaction with regard to our access to our services, maximise transactional completion rates by focusing on to reduce avoidable contact and taking a one-council approach to handling customer enquiries. That's a very wordy way of saying, all of our different software suppliers, from our social care and health to our highways people to our library software, are all really keen and interested in selling us a self-service portal that allows our citizens to interact with their software directly. But that is not a one-council approach because our citizen might have to access three services, that means they need three usernames, three passwords, it's crap. So we want to provide one portal into the authority with an integrated access into the back-end solutions, so the customer, the citizen, doesn't have to worry too much about how to do that sort of stuff. You wouldn't want a separate account for your Amazon books versus your Amazon movies, would you? To improve customer insight, so by capturing and managing information consistently to inform decision-making and design services and making sure that we've got fit-for-purpose infrastructure to support the approach to customer access, that's where Umbraco came in. So we had a site ethos, which drives how we build and deliver digital services and adheres to the 10 supporting digital first principles, which I'll come to in a minute. We've got a design ethos, a content ethos, content exists for one purpose, making our customers' lives easier, and we had a technology ethos. Technology we use is not important, it enables us and our customers to do is. Now, when I saw that, I thought, hang on, what are they talking about? Because I'm a technologist and an IT person, to me, the technology really does matter, but I kind of get what they're saying. Really, the technology is there to deliver something useful. So those design principles that they were talking about, start with the user's needs, do less, design with data, do the hard work to make it simple, iterate and iterate again, and then build for inclusion, and this was a huge driver for our usage of Umbraco because EasySite isn't responsive, even though they claimed there was a responsive module you could buy to make the site responsive, the results of that were extremely poor. So build for inclusion was huge for us because Umbraco gave us complete control of the HTML. We had very, very little control of the HTML when we were using EasySite. So understand how people access the services in the real world, that was a big driver for the design of the site. A lot of people arriving at our site directly from Google, deep into a page, rather than on the homepage and then navigating to the service they wanted. And the idea of building digital services, not websites, so trying to deliver a service via social media and Twitter and email and all these other sorts of other things, not necessarily just websites. Be consistent, not uniform, this is the idea of like a common design language like the BBC have, so as you move from BBC site to site, there's a set of overriding design principles which makes you understand that you're on a BBC website even though they look very different. We wanted to bring that into our sites. And trying to be open, transparent and share things as well, so we're trying to use open APIs, we're trying to open source as much of the technology that we've built as we can to meet with that objective. So that was our digital first project. It kicked off, we had project governance and all that sort of good stuff set up and then you sort of look at, well, how have we previously procured content management systems? And this is how a normal public sector procurement goes. You have your project with a project initiation document, governance structure, all that sort of stuff. That usually produces some requirements, this is what we want this piece of software to do. There's then an invitation to tender, depending on how big you think the project's going to be, how expensive you think the solution might be, that might have to be open for a set period of time. There's all sorts of EU and government regulations about how long tenders have to be left open. There's then a whole tender evaluation exercise, which is very, very long, time-consuming and expensive. You then have a series of demo days, so with our last procurement exercise, we had EasySite in, we had a company called Jadoo in, and we also had a company called Goss in. They did a whole day each where we've got 20 people from content, ICT, business, in a room, taking a demo. So that's 20 people times three days out of your office, that's incredibly expensive. Then you have the contract negotiation, which is never a first-time thing. Then you get some consultants on-site to actually look at, what's your infrastructure look like, all this sort of stuff. And finally, you install some software. So it's taken us all that time and all that effort and all that money and expense, the last one took us about six months to get to the point where we got some software installed and that was seen as really good. Six months was seen as really impressive, the time before that, it had been even longer. So people had pulled down walls to get to six months. What happens next? What happens after we've been through this long and fail-safe process? I'm sure it did this in the demo, so you actually get to use the software for the first time and demo land, in real life, suddenly they're not quite the same thing. Oh, that's going to be some custom code we'll need to write for you and there's some pound signs attached to that inevitably. It works great until we hit it with a real load. So our internet, which was our first thing, we ran on EasySite, looked fantastic, everything was going to work fine. We turned it on at four o'clock in the afternoon, rolled the new internet over, high-fived ourselves as we walked out the door and then came back in the following morning at half past seven to find out that most people use the internet first thing in the morning and the site had completely crashed, we'd had to roll it back and we then spent three months trying to pick our way through the code and get some sort of reasonable performance. I could do this myself if I could find any documentation. So we've got a team of developers, we've got five developers in my team, they're all very capable people. Trying to extend a proprietary piece of software where you don't have access to the code is impossible and there's no way of doing that without going back to the supplier. So you're tied in, this is a completely different world in Umbraco, obviously. So we reviewed our options for the platform. One was to stay with EasySite. We looked at open source alternatives, those were the four that got sort of shortlisted into the open source sphere. There was also the, looking at an alternative proprietary option. The alternative proprietary option was dismissed pretty quickly because we were already on a proprietary solution and we knew the problems. So really, it was a battle between EasySite, which was in and established and we kind of knew where the pain was already, and an open source alternative. Drupal, we dismissed fairly quickly. WordPress, I use in my own time, really don't want to use at work. WordPress is great for blogging and if you like to get hacked. So the numbers that Pierre and Nels showed at the start are big, but for WordPress, they're so much bigger and that means that they're a target, they're a target for everything. So if you don't have your WordPress site absolutely secure, then you're going to get hacked because the script kiddies love it. So the other reason we chose Umbraco is we're already a Microsoft platform, so we have SQL servers, we have IIS, we have people who understand how to make those things work and keep them alive. So Umbraco was an obvious fit. We're also developing a lot of MVC apps already and the MVC underpinnings of Umbraco seemed like a good fit with what we're doing. The open source route, we watched a bit of Umbraco TV, that looked good. Spoke to a member of the Umbraco community, I don't know if any of you know Andy Dob, who used to work for an agency in London, very helpful guy, done an awful lot of websites with Umbraco, talked me through it, I knew him through the Ultimate Frisbee community, I think Mark is around from the Ultimate Frisbee community as well. So Andy sort of said, look, there's nothing that I've tried to do with Umbraco that I've not managed to do yet, that's like, that sounds pretty good to me. So we downloaded it, installed it and kicked the tyres. And the first thing we did was we took a set of HTML templates and CSS files and JavaScript files that an agency had supplied us for another website and I gave it to one of my devs and said, you know, you've got two weeks, just take these files and see if you can build the Umbraco equivalent site in that two weeks. And she went and did it and came back two weeks later with the site looking identical to the version we'd already got, but in a completely different platform. That to us was the icing on the cake and we knew we'd got something we could work with. Our content team had also been using Umbraco in their own time and they said it was the best CMS experience that they'd had from a content point of view. So both the content team and the IT team were backing this one horse and that seemed like a very good route. However, there was some resistance. This was a comment that was genuinely put to me by one of my senior IT management. Should we still go through a procurement exercise? And at the point where she asked me that question, I got quite angry because we'd been through one of those before, we ended up with EasySite. But it's important to understand why they wanted to do that, why there's this resistance to just come and get something that you can download and install yourself. One of the key reasons, I think, is they moved the risk to the supplier. So by going through all these processes, the supplier is saying, this platform that I'm providing for you will deliver these things that you've told us you need to deliver. Whereas if you download something from an open source environment, you have to prove that yourself and you have to do it in a case-by-case basis. We're also, it's very good for proving due diligence, so if you ever get questioned and everything we do in local government and government generally is open for scrutiny and FOI requests and all that sort of stuff, the fact that you've been through a procurement process is something which a lot of people like because it means that you can tick the box and say, look, here's the process, we followed it to the letter. Good. So there's been a lot of changes in government procurement, largely because of the digital marketplace or sometimes known as the G-cloud. Anyone not heard of G-cloud before? Okay. So G-cloud is, anyone who's already on G-cloud in one way or another? Yay, cool. So G-cloud is an easy way for government to buy digital services, cloud-based solutions and it's got fixed pricing and it means that we can buy stuff without having to go through that big, long procurement route. There's a department as part of the GDS, Government Digital Service, which basically were looking at, well, the Government Digital Service looked at the way IT was working in government and one of the big things that they saw was these monolithic IT contracts, which were useless, you could never hold anyone up to them, big IT suppliers like Civica and Capita that never really delivered on what they said they were going to deliver. So by breaking the market down into these small bite-sized chunks that can be bought by government easily, they've really changed that route. Smaller contracts and we've released this from the stranglehold of big suppliers. So here's our team, just about make out our team on there. The lady holding the cake in the middle is Sarah Lay, who you may or may not know from, she's very involved in the Umbraco local government digital groups. And that's our content team mainly on the right and my team mainly on the left. But we've worked together to produce the site. So what have we done? There'll be some demos in a minute, don't worry. We launched, we went beta launch in May 2015, this was, the site was there, but there was very little fuss made of it. Gradually, we ramped up the fuss that we were making of it, but we didn't do anything other than turn an extra URL on. So beta.notttinghamshire.gov.uk suddenly went to this Umbraco site and that was the place that we were then building up content ready for the go-live. And the go-live was in September, where we flicked across from our www.notttinghamshire across onto Umbraco. We had about 2,500 redirect rules in there that handled all the content from EasySite going across into Umbraco and the traffic didn't drop at all, which was good because most of our traffic comes from Google, they had all the old URLs, all the old URLs had all changed and so the fact we didn't drop any traffic was a big win. We got all our training from Doug, who was taking photographs a minute ago, he's disappeared again, and we have our support contracts with Moriama, I think Mark's at the back, hello Mark, and Darren's around as well, Darren's at the back as well, hello chaps. So the fact that we were able to get a support contract off the shelf really took away a lot of the fears that our IT management had about getting an open source product in because they are able to push some of that risk back onto the supplier or the support people in this case. So using all of that stuff, see if we can switch out of here successfully. Some demos. This was our old website, built in EasySite. One of the key things you'll notice is what happens when the browser gets narrow. Not very much, it breaks. Now, we had something like 25% of our traffic was arriving mobile, but it's actually a lot more than that now. So our new website over here, which is very based on, well, the homepage is very based on our top tasks. And then we've got, it's a shame this monitor isn't wider. We've got these four big boxes at the bottom, so our big super footer, if you like. Let's see if we can change this so we go for our mobile experience. Everybody's happy with that, aren't they? So we've suddenly got a mobile responsive site. One of the key things that we wanted to do was make every single page a destination. The website used to have about 20,000 pages, it's now got about 1,500 pages, so we've really cut down the amount of content that's there. Every single page has been rewritten and amalgamated content from several different places. But we recognise that most people's journey to information on our website doesn't start at our website, it starts here. So if you search for Nottinghamshire school holidays, they go straight to the top link, it's a page on our website and there's no global navigation apart from the breadcrumb trail. There's all the dates you might need to know for our school holidays. We've also done some quite exciting things with integrations. So if I go back to our homepage, we have this, the navigation, if you like, there's no pages on the first, second or third, there is no pages on the first or second level. So when you go into browse the site and you click education, it loads a new page, but all it is is more navigation, there's no extra content there, all the content lives at the bottom of the tree. So if I go and find the page I was actually looking for. Councillors, contact councillor. So here we've got an integration, one of the big reasons we chose Umbraco is because we have a lot of data in back-end systems. Here, we're looking at our democratic management system, so all the councillors have got all their details in the democratic management system where it holds all their outside interests and all that sort of stuff. We're able to bring all that in and create a separate page for each of them, it's pulling out of the democratic management system, it's got an API, so we're calling an API from a controller and bringing that up. Pretty good. On the homepage, we've got this events system. We're looking to roll this event system out, not just to Nottinghamshire, but to Nottingham City and any organisation in the county that wants to have a feed of events going on. So that might be, you know, any hotel or someone that wants to be involved in the tourism industry, any country parks, libraries, that sort of thing, that want to sort of say, these are the other events that are going on in our area. We've built this event system with an open API that anybody can take data out of as long as they've got an API key. And then we integrated it into Umbraco. So it's kind of the idea of separating out the different systems and then showing the data in the appropriate place. Each of the pages got a nice little, it's got its own event page with links into Google and all that sort of good stuff. But if we go to see all events in Nottinghamshire, this is something we did, rather than write a whole load of Umbraco code that fished in the data from our event system and then presented it back as HTML, we've used Knockout to do that job for us. So all this data here is being pulled straight out of Knockout, so as it loads, you might probably be able to see it, it's loading and then it pulls the data in and renders it in real time. So we're using a MVVM, hang on, is that right? Yeah, MVVM model to pull that data across. So this whole event search page, including this calendar object at the side, is not back-end Umbraco stuff, but it is using templates that are rendered in Umbraco and then Knockout to pull the data in further than that. And I think that's probably a pattern that we might do more of in future because it solves a lot of the issues if we were to move to an Umbraco as a service. One of the things that we'd lose by moving to Umbraco as a service is integration into our data centre. So we want to still be able to do exciting things like this, event search, but without having to have that solid link into our data centre. So using an API which is exposed, that pulls the data directly into the HTML and renders in that way is a way that we could use to get around that problem. So back to the slides. Where's the pain? There's been a fair bit of pain despite Umbraco being a wonderful place. Content migration, I asked a question at the end of the previous session about how do you migrate content from one place to another? We've got an environment where our devs sit in my team, we're doing all the integrations with our back-end systems, we've got designers who do all the HTML, CSS, JavaScripts, that sort of goodness, they sit in the content team and then you've got the content developers who also sit in the content team but don't work directly with the designers. Designers want real content so they can design their templates, but we need an environment where we can develop that safely away, database synchronisation, all that sort of stuff. It's been really hard to get that right and I know Darren and Mark have tried their very best to help us come up with the best solution for that and I think it's a solution that works pretty well for IT, but not one that works as well for the content team. I think it might just be that the content team are asking Umbraco to do something it doesn't do very well, which is migrate content across different environments and I'm sure Kevin's probably suffered with this and yeah, there's nods around the place. I don't think Umbraco's on its own in that respect, but that's where a lot of the pain is. Devs, designers and content people working separately, that's caused us an awful lot of issues and I don't think we've really bottomed all those out yet. I was very interested to see the developments that have gone on in Umbraco as a service because I think it might allow us to do... allow us to do some things differently to solve some of those problems. And setting up environments, so setting up environments was something that we did internally. We built our own server infrastructure in-house. In retrospect, that was probably a bad idea. We probably should have just gone for Azure or something like that, so that we were free of all the constraints of our own environment. You know, it's a website, should be on the cloud really. What can you do? How can you, how can the Umbraco community do more with the public sector? And by the public sector, I mean education as well, because schools, colleges, universities have a very similar set of circumstances to large public sector organisations. Health, you know, health trusts, hospitals, these are all sorts of places where I think Umbraco's got a big potential to be a good tool. Some of the problems, some of the reasons why I think the Umbraco community might shy away a little bit from getting involved with the public sector is the procurement headaches. I've already talked about what our process is like. If you're a small agency, that might not be something you have the capacity to deal with. You know, responses to tenders, all the business development that goes with that, that's expensive, nasty, horrible stuff. Politics with a capital P. You might not like politics. Lots of people don't. I tolerate it. Politics with a small p. Big, complex organisations have, you know, a whole swirling mess of politics at sort of director level and below. The public sector is definitely not cool. You know, designing the latest fashionable interface for some latest fashionable product is very exciting. We don't do that in the public sector. We do, you know, big sites. And I'd wanted to keep the Ps going, you see. Passed, we're stuck in it. So I think there's this preconception that public sector's a bit backwards. They don't necessarily have people that get it. And I'd like to sort of start to perhaps change your minds about that because there are lots of people in the public sector do get it, do want to do things differently, do want to make the most of our money. So why should you help? This is really an appeal to your better nature. We are all taxpayers. Every single one of us pays money into this big old system. One of the reasons why I stay in the public sector is because I have a friend of mine who's an IT consultant and he regularly goes to the public sector and he comes back to me over a beer and, Tom, how do you tolerate working in this environment? My standard response to him is, without good people on the inside trying to change it, how do you ever expect it to be different? Public services help society function better. At every point where we're delivering services, we're helping oil the wheels of the nation. And that's at a local level, at, you know, helping vulnerable people, supporting people when they need it, whether they're young, they're old, they're sick, or even if they've got a pothole or a street light out. The local government at all levels helps people out. The challenges are varied, interesting and infinitely rewarding. Very, very rarely do you get the same thing thrown at you twice. And there are some of the nicest people you'd ever likely to meet working in local government. How can you help? This is what I think would be a really good thing to see come out of the Umbraco community. And it might take more than one organisation coming together to do it. And I know that there's already organisations out there that do bits of this. So we got our training and our support from two different people. Now, for us, that was actually quite good because it meant both of those bills were quite low and we could do it without going through any sort of procurement exercise whatsoever. We just said, we like Darren and we like Doug and we'll deal with those people. And they came recommended. So we know, they came in dirt cheap and, not dirt cheap, but good value. Excellent value. And Doug buys you lunch when he comes to train you as well. But a package of services that included training, support and installation. The last thing I think this community could really do well with is to sell Umbraco. We constantly get a stream of IT people coming through our doors and they get audience and FaceTime with our senior management because they've got something to sell. And the Umbraco community is largely agencies that don't necessarily go out and actually pitch for stuff into this market. We certainly would never have gone anywhere near Umbraco had it not been for people who understood that it existed and what it could do inside the organisation. There was nobody coming to us. And I think that's a really missed opportunity because, because there doesn't necessarily need to be a procurement exercise, you can go to somebody, especially if you know what they're already using, you know where their pain is, and say, look, here's an alternative. Just give us an hour of your time, we'll demo it, we'll show you what it can do, we'll show you how it fits with public sector. Here's a list of the other authorities which are using it. And by the way, we're not the thin end of the wedge. Shropshire, Liverpool, there's a whole bunch of other local authorities that are already using Umbraco. And that's, that's, you know, a big string to the bow. But I think if, if that could happen, then you'd start seeing a lot of uptake. I'm interested in seeing that happen because the network effect of having local government problems looked at and dealt with by the Umbraco community means that we get a better product that works better for our sorts of environment. But I think if you can help local authorities make the best of the limited resources they've got, then that would be a big win for everybody.